Anstehen.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's November 15th, 2022, City Council meeting. I would also respectfully like to ask that everyone silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Kathy Hikes for tonight's invocation.
Let us pray. Lord, bring comfort and solace to those who mourn, especially those at the University of Virginia tonight. We pray for those who participated in the recent election by voting or running for office. We pray that those who won will fairly and diligently represent us, and that those who lost be comforted, that their engagement in the process is the key to making our democracy work. During this season of showing gratitude for the blessings of life, especially for the food we eat, we include the bounty this year of the farms and gardens, and of those who tend them all around our community. We look forward to and give thanks for the full tables we may soon enjoy as we gather with families and friends in our annual ritual of giving thanks. We ask for your blessing on this council, that we may thoughtfully and with wisdom decide the issues that come before us tonight. Bless all our city employees, as they work every day to provide a fine quality of life for our citizens. May they enjoy an abundant table this Thanksgiving. Keep us mindful, especially at this time of year, of the hungry and the homeless, and bless the efforts of those who work to feed and house them. We ask these things humbly and with grateful hearts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, which is November 26, 2022. At this time, I'd like to recognize Downtown Manager Erin Nettles. We'll read a proclamation, and then we'll have you say a few words about that.
The City of Burlington, North Carolina, would like to issue a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, November 22, 2022. Whereas the City of Burlington, North Carolina, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three-quarters of the U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their local community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping in small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop and eat at the small, independently owned businesses all year long, not during the holiday season. Whereas Burlington, North Carolina supports our local businesses, it creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now and therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, in the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, or 22, as Small Business Saturday, in the City of Burlington, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses emergence on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, this 15th day of November 2022.
So, behalf of the Burlington Downtown Corporation, I would say thank you to all of the City Council. Appreciate it. As we said, on Saturday, November 26, we are celebrating Small Business Saturday. We do all to shop small, small businesses downtown on that day, but also keep small business every day, especially being in the town the size we are in Burlington. This economy really here, in a local economy like this, is important. It's important to shop small to keep money coming back into our local economy. We have a lot of niche businesses that don't find in the larger, big box stores, and we can build relationships with the people that have these businesses. So, we just want to remind you to shop small, think small, all year long, but especially on November 26, celebrate in small business style. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for those words. The next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Newness of Council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items?
No. Our next item is the approval of minutes from the October 3, 2022, work session, October 4, 2022, City Council meeting, and October 18, 2022, City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is additions to the consent agenda. It's been requested to add Item D, voluntary contiguous annexation request, 00 Halley Hill Road, parcel identification number 140996, and Item E, mid-year pay adjustment, sworn police officers, and adopt an ordinance amending Burlington City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-261. Is there a motion on the additions? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
With the additions?
With the additions.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to authorize the donation of Police Canine Shadow from the Burlington Police Department to the Graham Police Department to continue service in a partnering municipality. Item B, to approve the proposed 2023 regular work session and city council meeting schedule of the Burlington City Council. Item C, to authorize an amendment to the annual audit contract between the City of Burlington and Stout Stewart McGowan &amp; King, LLP, for services on the fiscal year 2021-22, which provides an extension to the reporting time from the audit firm to the LGC if submitted after November 30, 2022. Item D, to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for December 6, 2022, to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation for 0 Halley Hill Road. The parcel is approximately 17 acres in size, located at the end of Halley Hill Road, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 140996. And Item E, to approve the proposed request for mid-year salary adjustment for sworn police officers, along with the additional 2% increase during November and April until the city has sworn deplorable officers at 85% of positions filled, and adopt an ordinance amending Burlington City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-261, effective November 26, 2022. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move we approve the foregoing consent agenda?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under new business, Item 1, City Council will consider the City of Burlington priorities for the 2023 North Carolina Legislative and Advocacy Goals Submittals to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. At this time, we'll recognize our Director of Economic Development, Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's good to see you again this evening, albeit a cold and dreary evening. I am here, as I was last evening, to present the Legislative Advocacy Goals for City Council in the City of Burlington for 2022-2023. And just a brief review of what our legislative advocacy work entails. Really, this is a communication and collaboration process. By putting these goals together, we provide a very clear and concise statement to our elected officials at the federal and state level, what the city's priorities are, what City Council is interested in, what policies and bits of legislation we will ask them to work on, on our behalf. Again, this is collaborative work. We work very closely, especially with our state delegation, and meet with them regularly. This process identifies programs, potential grants that we have for some problem solving, for issues that the city is dealing with, for projects that we'd like funding for, and then, of course, advocating for specific policies, legislation, or advocating against that same legislation. This work is not done just by the city, although your city department heads and senior staff are very instrumental in putting this list together. We work closely with the Ferguson Group at the federal level that does lobbying work for us, helps with letters of support, aligning support for interests and grants of the city. The NC League of Municipalities is very effective at the state level in working not just with the City of Burlington, but municipalities throughout North Carolina. And the first page of this legislative advocacy agenda is intended to inform the NC League of Municipalities and be a part of a greater statewide effort of other cities in making that advocacy push. And then finally, as I mentioned, your department heads, your administrative leadership staff here at the city, and our police and fire chiefs in public safety, very instrumental in putting this together. As Representative, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hikes mentioned in her invocation earlier, we do have some new elected officials at the federal level. So, at the U.S. House of Representatives, through redistricting, we are now majority District 4, who Valerie Fucci is now the representative there from Durham. Our part of Burlington that sticks into Guilford County is represented by Kathy Manning in the 6th District. And then a new senator, Ted Budd, who was formerly the 6th District Representative for North Carolina, is now one of our state senators, joining Tom Tillis, now the Senior Senator for North Carolina. And then at the local level, we see a very familiar face joining our delegation. Steve Ross is now back at the 63rd District in the North Carolina House, joining Dennis Riddell. And then John Hardister, again, similar to Kathy Manning, is our bits of City of Burlington that are in Guilford County. He represents those in the House. And then Amy Gailey represents all of these areas in the 25th District for the North Carolina Senate. So, those are the recent ones. Congratulations, of course, to the winners, and of course, our local races as well, where we had some commissioners re-elected. Some of the priorities that are listed, and to summarize a little bit, oftentimes when we do these, we're talking about local control and local revenue options. As you all know, municipalities are a creature and creation of the legislature, so all authority that we receive to do actions and provide services comes from that authority. So, we're always asking for more local control and opportunities to raise revenue or do different things with the revenue that the city gets. Certainly, year and year to my heart, but I know also the council's into our residents and businesses, its economic development. There are several items related to economic development projects, infrastructure growth within the city that are in these priorities. Transportation, again, a very high priority, whether that's public transportation, road construction, highways, maintenance. Transportation is usually a frequent flyer in these advocacy statements, and it is here again. I did mention our police and fire chiefs, and I'm certainly, I'm certain that's why all these firefighters are here today, if you're about these legislative advocacy goals. But we did talk about public safety benefits, training, and recruitment within these advocacy goals. And then the final page is reserved for projects, growth projects that the city is focusing on. We always ask for support in these growth projects to assist the city council, to assist the taxpayer in bringing these great projects to bear. I will note that in the 2021-2022 state budget, the city was successful in getting almost $16 million to help some of those projects that are very important to City Council, to our departments. So, we have been successful in the very recent past in lobbying and obtaining support for some of these projects. So, those lists are our priority projects from department heads and ongoing construction. And then certainly, just as I did last evening, we'll take any of your questions or additional comments. I did provide in follow-up to your email address as a summary of the HRC 448, the Investment Protect Act, at the federal level that Councilmember Hikes mentioned last night, that would provide additional direct aid to smaller police departments in the United States to support additional training, to support overtime, and some other items for smaller police departments. So, that additional information is in your inboxes, and it can be added or submitted to this list at your place.
Have you submitted this information to the League as well?
We have submitted a draft, but not the official final approved document. So, that certainly, we wanted to have these discussions with you, a work session, and then again, to see if people will read that final submission.
Thank you, Peter. Any additional questions for Peter? We had a pretty thorough review yesterday evening. So, anyone have any additional questions?
Thorough.
It was. Okay, thank you, Peter. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the submittal of the priority list.
So, move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Very good job by staff compiling all that. We greatly appreciate it. It's very thorough. Next item is a staff report concerning our winter events update. At this time, we'll recognize our special event supervisor, Sean Echavaria, and Downtown Manager Erin Nettles once again. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, here we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here today, giving us another opportunity to let you all know what we have going on. Obviously, the holiday season is among us, in case you forgot. Cold weather is even quick. Again, my name is Sean Echavaria. I'm the supervisor of special events for the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department, and Erin Nettles is going to get up here as well with me shortly. She's the Downtown Manager for the Burlington Downtown Recreation. As you all know, I'm sure you know of it, the Christmas Parade, the 75th Annual Christmas Parade is coming up this Saturday, November 19. It will start off with the under guard in front of it at 10:00 a.m., followed by our Grand Marshall, Mr. Frankie Taylor. We want to recognize Mr. Frankie Taylor for all his contributions that he's done to our local community. For those of you not familiar with Frankie Taylor, he is currently the volunteer athletic director for the Alamance Civitans. So, we do want to thank him for that, and it's an honor to be elected as the Grand Marshall. We've received an overwhelming majority of votes in his behalf. So, again, we included the map there. We want to make sure everyone is aware of all the street closures and downtown parking. Street closures are going to begin as early as 7:00 a.m. We hope to have it wrapped up at no later than 12:30, so the streets should be back open and flowing. As the parade makes its way through downtown, streets will continue to reopen behind them for folks to get out. Like you can see here, the municipal lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8 are open to the public. Lot 1 will be closed. That's where we'll be setting up for the parade. And for those of you, I know we have a lot of fire and police that will be at the parade as well. That's where we'll be getting set up and getting everyone ready to go out. Council, as always, you all are invited. We will have a flip for you all this year. I know I wasn't here last year, but I did hear of the moment that we won't even talk about, so we're gonna move on past that.
Kathy and I walked with nobility.
But we've got a backup plan and a backup to our backup plan, so we've got it all figured out. So, we hope to see you all there. We hope that you can all make it. So, that's coming up again this coming Saturday. I'm gonna let Erin take over, because she's got the
We want good weather, though. Is it gonna be good weather?
It's gonna be nice, but it's gonna be cold. So, bundle up, bring your mittens and pan warmers, and definitely some long johns if you got them.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, my Aaron, your council again. So, I'm here to talk about Small Business Saturday, which I think you just learned a little bit about, and also our tree lighting event. We have scheduled these at Coonside together. We thought, what better way to bring people downtown than to have a Christmas family-friendly event that we can advertise throughout the county and hopefully get people outside of Burlington as well coming downtown for that event. Just to recap briefly, Small Business Saturday, it's backed by American Express, was started in 2010, and it highlights the significance of supporting small, independently owned businesses downtown. They create jobs, boost the local economy, and keep the communities thriving here. So, that was their goal and their recognition. It's gonna run during regular business hours. We've worked with the businesses to encourage them to have special sales, or they're doing art promotions, they're having open houses, releasing the latest addition to an art collection at Alamo. Lots of fun things coming. We've been working with the different businesses to see how we can help and how we can help promote that. The VDC has also offered to do social media spotlights for each of the businesses. So, we're gonna be right in those the week leading up to Small Business Saturday. So, we're gonna focus on who the business is, who owns the business, who works in the business, what's the story behind it, what makes them unique, so that hopefully the people watching this on social media can connect, which ideally becomes a customer that has a personal relationship or kind of a history behind that business that you can't have with the larger stores. And we announced earlier to shop small on November 26. Please join us downtown Burlington. Moving right along, since it's the same date. Our Christmas tree lighting event, you are all invited to this as well. This event is gonna run from 4 to 6 at the end of Small Business Saturday. So, again, it's the same day. It's gonna be outside in Lot 1, on the corner of Spring and Front Streets, where the Christmas tree is now, but it's not currently lit. It will be lit, and we'll have some Astro Turk under it hopefully very soon. Turk grass. The Lighting of the Dream will take place at 5:30. So, during that event, we'll have a time where we'd like to call you all, invite you on stage to join Santa, who will already be up there, to actually flip the switch and light the lights on the Christmas tree. So, it should be a fun event. We've partnered with Maverick Radio to have them on at ads, and they're also gonna broadcast live the tree lighting. Sam is gonna read Christmas books to children and post her photos. We've got Christmas performances from the Alamance Jazz Band. We've got several invites out to other community groups, choir groups, dance groups. So, hopefully, we'll be adding to that agenda this week. We've partnered with Garden Valley Farmers Market to decorate the stage. So, we try to really have a focus on small business since it's Small Business Saturday with this event. We've partnered with the Big Good Food Truck, who's gonna give 100 free hot chocolates to the first people there, which is exciting. And of course, they'll sell their treats and goodies. We'll have free Christmas craft tables for kids, free face painting, placement and write letters and mail letters to Santa. We're gonna be collecting new and unwrapped gifts for Christmas cheer at the event. We'll have a VDC, Burlington Downtown Corporation, table where we're gonna be selling downtown dollars, which are essentially gift certificates of gifts to 24 different participating downtown businesses, and trying to bring more awareness to that for shopping locally. When you buy those gift certificates, it's obviously gonna be spent locally, which is what we're gonna focus on. We'll also be doing a raffle and selling some T-shirts. We've got some printed cards that we had made that have We've got these, you should see these going to our businesses. Several businesses already have them up, and we're gonna be encouraging them to get them up this week, and we have these sitting on a lot of counters for people to take. I think that about covered, but there's a lot going on, but it's only two hours. Again, we would invite you to attend and help with the lighting at 5:30, and join us for the whole insider event, and they all will be helping it small. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and you both for.
Okay. One more.
Oh, we got another one?
We were just going in chronological order for you. I got you.
The ones he's reporting on, I don't think we, I don't think we made it clear, he's reporting on the ones that are planned by the Recreation Parks, and then I was reporting on the ones that were Burlington Downtown Corporation.
Okay.
All right, so moving right along. So following Erin's event downtown, we do have Holiday Magic Round Corner that is coming up Saturday, December 10th. That'll be 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Again, there's gonna be a ton going on. I'll hit some of the highlights. Again, Santa will be visiting us again in Burlington, so Santa will be there, write the tree for photos, and children will have a chance of writing, you know, their wish list to Santa. We will have a bunch of different dance groups going on, the Allman's Fine Arts, folks will have the play going on inside their building, as well as a dance stage outside. We will have music plays throughout the event, we'll have horse and carriage rides. We really wanted to focus this event, kind of to touch on what Erin's already doing, we wanted to focus this event on a lot of downtown businesses, especially the restaurants. So as you can see throughout the map, we have highlighted a lot of local restaurants, or all of the downtown restaurants where you can stop by and grab a bite to eat. Those are restaurants that are open during this event, so folks will know, they'll be able to get a printout of this, and they'll know exactly where they can go to eat. So again, that's just a small snippet of what we have going on. There are 50 street closures for this event as well, starting as early as 1:00 p.m., and they should be wrapped up by about 8:00 p.m. And we've been putting all that out on our social media and making sure the public is well-aware and they can plan accordingly. Aside from the portion of Lot One where the Christmas tree is, where it's already closed, there will be no lot closures, so people will be able to park pretty much anywhere downtown. And as you all know, any parking spot downtown, there's not really a bad one. So we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the holiday festivities. We will have an artisan vendor market going on as well, so if you're like me and you forget last minute gifts, this is a good spot to go and get those. And then the last item that I wanted to touch on is one that we are certainly planning for and hoping for the best for, but I want to make you all aware of our efforts and let you know what we have going on. Should we move forward, and should the Carousel project and everything downtown at City Park, or down at City Park, open up, we are doing our Carousel Christmas in the Park. This is gonna be another opportunity. We're doing it December 22nd, which is a Thursday, and we're looking to capitalize on folks that are coming in to visit family in Burlington. A lot of people take that week off, and we are hoping that we can have a fantastic event with them down at the Carousel. Again, that's very contingent on plans down there, but we are planning to have a great event should we be able to. So we just want to let y'all know, and we appreciate your time, and thank you for all you did.
Nolan says he's guaranteeing that.
Okay. Sign that here. No, I'm, I'm a man of faith, and I think that what we're gonna push through, and we're gonna make it happen, but again, so thank you for your time. Do you have any questions about any of those upcoming events?
That's a lot of events. Aaron, we're doing it for New Year's.
Get back to you.
So we are planning, I know it's something we talked about with Morgan and Erin, but we are planning on coming back at least quarterly and keeping you all on the loop, as well as, you know, anyone that is attending these meetings or walking at home. Just another avenue to let people know what we have going on in Burlington.
That was, that was great, very thorough. Thank you both for handling that. Any questions for Erin?
No. Just a reminder, all the parents out there is gonna be bringing kids downtown Saturday to ride on flights, to be in vans, to walk, just come early.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So people that are actually in the parade, we're encouraging as early as 8:00 a.m. I know year after year, it seems people do come earlier, but the lots open up for them to get in at 8:00 a.m. And from my understanding, if you want the good spots downtown, you gotta get there early. So no later than 9:00 a.m. if you're looking to really lock down your good spot. Bring a comfortable chair, bring hand warmers, bring your mittens, bring hats, everything you need. It's gonna be a chilly one. I think the high is looking like 44 or something like that, and then the low is about 29. So I know when our staff gets there in the morning, it'll be quite brisk.
What I was referring to was distressed mothers who's driving their kids off in certain corners.
And don't realize the streets are closed.
And don't realize the streets are closed. Those kids are trying to get to certain locations to be on the float or in a walking unit. There are times that our police officers, all of our staffing, firefighters can vouch that. That's an interesting conversation between the parents and some of our staff then. No one's in the wrong, but just trying to, if we could let people know, any kind of information we get out, get, get, just get there early if they serve it.
Yeah, and we send out maps to every single organization and group that's registered. We send out maps to them, and we try to emphasize, I know it's one thing if you're a business owner and you have a sponsored float, it's one thing for you to be aware of that, but we encourage those folks to pass it along to everyone that's gonna be participating. Because we do have those designated drop-off areas. I know the big one this year is gonna be over Broad Street, so people will be able to drop off right there. We will have police officers and everyone there, so we're encouraging that, and we're trying to get the information out as best as we can. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is, we'll transition into public comment periods. As everyone knows, public comments must be signed up, and it must be on topics that are not on tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes. We do have five individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. First, on public comments is Danny Morton. Mr. Morton.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I come to you like to represent all these guys that are behind me. I'm from a family of firefighters. My father was a firefighter, my brother, my dad, and my son. And I know that, I know there's been a lot of stuff that's happened as far as budget-wise for the police department, and gee, you know, I love you guys, and y'all, y'all deserve everything that you're doing, but I think the council needs to really think about these heroes that are behind us and what we're gonna do for them. They put their lives on the line every day. They strap on gear that's making them 75% more likely to get cancer. They pull twisted bodies out of cars, the stuff that they can't unsee, you know, they take it home to their families. You talked about having a table for Thanksgiving this, this year. There'll be a lot of them, and they won't see their family in their table Thanksgiving, because they'll be out there protecting, serving. Hopefully not having any fires where people sat their turkey fires, kept their, kept their, you know, paddies or their decks on fire. But they'll be there for that. They're up at all hours of the night. They get a call. EMS is already stretched too thin, and these guys are the first ones that are there on the EMT calls. They're, they're giving everything they've got, giving CPR to try to bring somebody back to life. And I think, I think the council would be astute if they would really think about these guys right here and what they do. I don't know what y'all have in mind, I know y'all, I don't know what y'all talk about in your work sessions and everything else, I'm not there, but these guys are the heroes. These are guys that are, if your child's in the house and the house is on fire, they're gonna stop, they're gonna run in, they're gonna drop everything, not even think about their safety. They're coming in for your family and everything. And I know, as like I said, as I've seen it, I've seen it firsthand, because like I said, I'm from a family of firefighters. I've been sitting in the front seat of a truck while my dad was on the call and seeing firefighters just running into a burning house. And that's what these guys, these ladies and gentlemen do every day. And, you know, we talk about mental health days and stuff like that, they need mental health days. They need, they need, you're losing firefighters to bigger departments for salad. You can actually go and do a job stocking shelves at Target and make more than what these guys, these ladies and gentlemen are making. We need to do something to keep our firefighters, they're trained, they're equipped, but they need to be funded. They need to be taken care of. And as big of a city as we are, and I know everybody don't want their taxes to go up, but if it causes taxes to go up to get these guys, what these ladies and gentlemen, what they need, then that's, maybe that's what it needs to be, but we need to take care of them. We need to think about what they're, you know, what they're, what they need to support their families. Because I think, you know, we have a retention problem, right, chief? We have a retention problem keeping people. I mean, you've already got trained firefighters, you've already changed your ISO already to where it's gonna be cheaper for insurance. That's already gone up to a level two. That's because these guys are putting in the time, they're putting in the effort. They're sitting on the highway, pulling just mangled bodies out of cars, stuff that they'll never be able to unsee, and we can't take care of them? We're gonna lose them to county depart, county departments are paying more than our city departments, and we're covering what? They're taking care of what, $1 billion worth of property in the city? Then they can go to smaller places like Wipsonville, EM Bowl, AO, and make more money there? You're gonna end up losing really good people who are dedicated their lives to Burlington, and you're gonna end up losing them for, for months. And we, and I, I know the Carousel is a great thing, but we're gonna spend $3 million for hobby horses, and, you know, you've got firefighters that are gonna leave and go to smaller, smaller private parks? So like I said, I don't know what y'all have in plane, have planned, don't know what y'all thinking about for them, but think about these guys right here behind me, because they're the heroes. They are the heroes. Police Department is too, I'm not taking anything away from y'all, y'all deserve it. Y'all, y'all, I wouldn't want either one of them to die. I couldn't do it. I'm a small business owner here in this town, been here 18 years, been in business 18 years here in this town. I, I wouldn't want their job. So thank you. Keep them in mind. I know y'all, y'all have a lot on your plate, and the budgets are tight, I get it, but we need to take care of our hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Next on public comments, we have Katie Bryant. Ms. Bryant, welcome.
I live at 204 Bartlett Drive, Pittsburgh, just downstream here. I'm a co-founder of Clean Hall River, a local advocacy group, working to spread awareness regarding our drinking water crisis. I speak today to a part, a sense of urgency to all of you. Not only is an advocate, just a scientist, a mother, and a wife to retired 20 veteran. We represent a family who has been contaminated as a result of a very lax regulatory system. As many of you know, our drink water is pulled from the Hall River, which has been polluted for roughly, or it's documented, for 37 years now, just the result of industrial contaminants like PFAS or forever chemicals, and one for dioxine being discharged from Burlington, Creteville, and Greensboro. Since 2011, my family has been drinking, cooking, bathing, playing in the water, high levels of PFAS, far beyond the EPA health advisory limit of 70 parts per trillion, for PFOA and PFOS, which are just two of the 9,000 man-made chemicals that fall under the PFAS category. In 2019, the collective PFAS leaving Burlington was 33,000 parts per trillion. I just said 70 for two. Collectively, we had 33,000 leave in here, which prompted me to move my family out of the Pittsburgh town limits and onto a well. Just this year, the EPA changed their regulations for these two chemicals to .004 parts per trillion and .02. But that regulation change comes too late for my family. And state just reported that our levels collectively in Pitt, in Pittsburgh exceed the national average. In fact, we show the highest levels of contamination in Cape Fear River Basin, including my family. My two daughters, who are eight and 10 already, have PFAS levels equivalent to that of adults. And I don't know what that means for their future medical health. My husband also has the highest level in my family, which is common among men. The National Academy of Science, Engineering, and Medicine is recommending that I now reduce our exposure and speak to their doctors to monitor their cholesterol, hypertension, pregnancy disorders, breast cancer, thyroid disorders, kidney and testicular cancer, and ulcerative colitis. As research continues, this list will grow. It's not just my family, though. It's my town, and it's firefighters. They use A triple F bone, which is PFAS. We are a community suffering from many health complications in Pittsburgh. Clean Hall River sent out a health survey in 2020, and we checked every single box of disorders associated with PFAS exposure. In the U.S., we don't require chemical manufacturers to prove their man-made chemicals are safe before utilizing them in manufacturing. Because of this, we are living in a time when the burden of proof lies on the shoulders of academics and you are our regulatory body. The fate of the entire Cape Fear River Basin lies in hands like yours. It literally lies in all of your hands. 98% of us in this room have PFAS in our blood, and we never asked those chemical manufacturers for it, none of you. I encourage all of you, everyone listening right now, to get a blood serum value for yourself and to start protecting yourself, and join Clean Hall River in eliminating it from the state of North Carolina and from our Hall River. Thank you.
Next on our list is Jessica Mirks.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jessica Mirks. I live at 126 Evergreen Drive in Pittsburgh. I'm also an assistant professor of biology at Elon University and co-founder of Clean Hall River. I'm here representing my town, Pittsburgh, and the community in which I work right here. As you are aware, extremely high levels of PFAS have been discharged from the Burlington wastewater treatment plants for decades, polluting the Hall River, which my town, Pittsburgh, draws its drinking water from. In fact, 98% of the PFAS being detected in the Hall River is coming from right here in Burlington. To make matters worse, in July of 2022, the EPA released a new regulatory standard for PFAS, resulting in the town of Burlington being out of compliance with levels of PFAS above health advisory limits. So that means for me and my family, is that I am drinking contaminated water at home, and me, my colleagues, and my students are drinking it at school. In 2020, Burlington entered into an agreement with the Hall River Assembly to monitor and report on PFAS and one for dioxine contamination in the Hall. I want to personally thank each of you for the promises that were made in that agreement, but it is time to take the next step. The council must be a leader on this issue. We need continuous monitoring, monitoring, and reporting on PFAS, and we need to hold the industries discharging these pollutants accountable. The polluters should have a robust pre-treatment program in place to prevent these dangerous chemicals from making their way into our wastewater, our river, our leachate, and our drinking water. Two of the responsible industries here, Shawma, ELSI, and Unikem Specialty Chemicals, have started moving their contaminated waste on-site, that is videos. Polymer Holding, another industry here, has adapted a closed-loop system in which they take their wastewater, they recollect it, recycle it, and they reuse it. We need you, the council, to pressure other industries in the area to follow suit and to be responsible for their waste. Their waste products do not belong in my body. What will you do to ensure that the water in our schools, our restaurants, and our homes are safe to drink? How will you make sure that our children, my children, are not drinking poison at the water fountains on the playground? Burlington needs a long-term plan to protect its community and mine. What is your plan for continuous monitoring and reporting? Can this community trust that you will disclose accurate information about the Two of the responsible industries here, Shawna LLC and Unicam Specialty Chemicals, have started moving their contaminated waste on-site. That is good news. Polymer Holding, another industry here, has adapted a closed-loop system in which they take their wastewater, they recollect it, recycle it, and they reuse it. We need you, the council, to pressure other industries in the area to follow suit and to be responsible for their waste. Their waste products do not belong in my body. What will you do to ensure that the water in our schools, our restaurants, and our homes are safe to drink? How will you make sure that our children, my children, are not drinking poison at the water fountains on the playground? Burlington needs a long-term plan to protect its community and mine. What is your plan for continuous monitoring and reporting? Can this community trust that you will disclose accurate information about the levels of PFAS and other contaminants coming from these industries? My community deserves transparency on this issue. We deserve swift, swift action against those who pollute our water. You have the power to protect us, so what will you do next? Thank you.
Next, under public comments, we have Kelsey Bidding.
Am I the only person to ever say that right? Who do you make? My name is Kelsey Bidding and I live at 1738 Ralph Road in Burlington, North Carolina. I'm also an assistant professor of environmental studies at Elon University, where my introduction to environmental science class, I spent the past month learning about emerging contaminants like the so-called forever chemicals in a PFAS family. With the help of my colleagues, Dr. Merricks and Ms. Bryant from Pittsburgh, and our organization Clean Hall River, we learned many eye-opening facts that were quite new to most of us, including myself. These include that in the U.S., new chemicals are developed every year and deployed in industry without any prior precautionary research on what their effects might be on humans and other animals. That there are thousands of chemicals in a PFAS family alone. And that due to the incredible strength of the carbon-fluoride bond in their structure, these chemicals may literally never degrade in the environment naturally. That due to the natural cycling of materials in the environment, PFAS and other emerging contaminants that are used in industrial processes and products inevitably end up in the water we drink and the air we breathe. PFAS chemicals are now found in the blood of 98% of Americans, very likely including all of us in this room. And PFAS exposure has been strongly linked to a wide range of adverse health conditions, including kidney and testicular cancers, low birth weight, and thyroid disease. In class, we analyzed data and figures created by researchers from NC State and Duke Universities. And that data clearly pinpointed the East Burlington wastewater treatment plant as a primary source of PFAS contaminants found in Pittsburgh's drinking water downstream on the Hall River. But everyone is downstream, close to one. And based on the new regulatory values released this year by the EPA, Burlington's drinking water is now also exceeding safe values for PFAS chemicals. On behalf of my students and our community, I ask you to please take action. In the absence of legislation requiring the testing of new chemicals before they are put into use, and other solutions like those that Dr. Merrick described, thorough filtration of both drinking water intake and wastewater outflows are necessary to protect our health and that of our downstream neighbors. And we'll also put pressure on our upstream neighbors in Forsyth and Gilford Counties to do right by us as well. Thank you. If you would like more information about these chemicals, because I knew nothing about them until my colleagues introduced me to this idea, we have some informational materials that were brought with us that were created by my students. So please stop me on the way out.
Thank you. Next on our list is Thomas Will.
Hi, everyone. Listen, I won't take any of your time here. After listening to what everybody had to say, particularly with firefighters, what I had to say was pretty small and I wouldn't want to waste your time with it. But I highly support these firefighters and what these folks have to say. So anything I have to say is pales in comparison to what they have to say.
Okay. Thank you. This time we'll move into council comments. Any council comments from, to council? We do have, we do have one special recognition. We can't put magnanimous at the end of his name, but tonight is, today is Nolan Kirkman's birthday. So we want to wish Nolan a happy birthday.
30th, thanks.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, a repetitive 30th.
20, 30, 30, 30.
Yeah. And the only other comment I have is I think it's important to state that, on behalf of my colleagues, we, this, this city council and those on the leadership team love and respect and cherish each and every employee in the city of Burlington. We talk about it often. We discuss your needs often. We are always trying to plan to advance our initiatives and be competitive and lead a world-class environment and a world-class organization. We've done a lot of very positive things in the last 10 months that I think can be documented and discussed, but not for lack of more things yet to be done. And we're constantly working on those things. And I think it's important that not just those that are here tonight, but every city employee understands that we love you and we respect you and we cherish the work you do. It's a noble profession. Working in city government is a noble profession. It's not just a job. You touch people's lives, you touch, you heal people during sorrows, you solve problems when problems can't be solved, you accomplish things that no one can imagine are accomplishable. And I think that's extremely important. So while we don't have the solutions to every issue that's before us immediately, we're very tenacious in our desire to see that everyone that is part of our city family is exactly that, part of city family. I was volunteer fire department, fireman at Station 31. I understand firefighting. I've had a lot of good conversations with many of you guys, men and women that are here today. My wife and I was, you guys were very hospitable to us last Christmas when we went through. And I thoroughly enjoyed chatting with you guys about some of the same things and telling the stories. But I want everybody to know how much we love you and how much we're gonna stay focused on what it is we need to do to create a world-class organization for each and every person working for the city of Burlington. And we can't solve all those problems in one meeting, but we'll stay focused on it. So I think it was important that everyone hear that and understand that this council is behind you 100%. Any comments?
Some of the problems identified today is something that's been out there for many years, frankly. Some of them have been created in reference to some of the pollution concepts we've talked about, whether it was Jordan Lake rules that we dealt with in the 2009, 8, 9, 10, in terms of manufacturing, in reference to what was used in the manufacturing communities throughout state of North Carolina. The reality of it is, is that it's, it's a, it's, it's a real challenge in terms of the efforts being put forth to... No one city can control what people upstream puts into the water. That's a, we eventually have to be a state regulation at some point in time, much as we went through with the Jordan Lake rules. But there's, and I believe I can speak for Mr. Patterson here, there's constant conversation amongst all of these cities, as far west as I would say Winston, certainly Greensboro, in Burlington, on what we're trying to do as a group to make improvements, especially with the Hall River, the water quality of Hall River. And Bob, you can speak to that if you wish to, and I don't put you on the spot. But there's substantial efforts as an effort between these communities. And these are very professional organizations working on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Yes, we, the municipalities that discharge into the Hall River have been working on these problems. Nutrient-related, Greensboro, Greensville are also working on the 1-4 dioxine issue. We've been working on an extensive study since 2020 on PFAS discharges at the East Water Peace Burlington Plant and the inputs to those, to the, to the plant that are creating those, those higher PFAS values. So we've done some really cutting-edge research that is still underway, try to identify those sources, which we have identified what we think to be the major sources. They are working on methods to reduce or to reduce their discharge to us of PFAS chemicals or possible to eliminate that by eliminate the PFAS chemicals by product substitution or changing their manufacturing process. That is a process that takes time. Most of these PFAS chemicals really, although they've been in use since the 40s, we can recall through, through time, the treatment tech, or the identification that there was health advisory, their health issues occurred probably within the last 10 to 15 years. Treatment technologies to remove those, those chemicals are evolving, there's a lot of research coming on now. Most types of treatment are very, very expensive to implement on a larger scale because of source reduction, source minimization, product elimination is, is the most effective means. And we're looking towards, you know, the federal government's working on regulations to eliminate PFAS and getting into the, the environment in the first place through products and on the backside to deal with what is there now. They are forever chemicals because of the strong fluorine-fluoride bond, and that makes them very difficult to treat and remove. Most of the types of treatment methods that are, that are emerging right now capture that PFAS and then you still have a disposal problem of how you dispose of that captured material. There is PFAS, it's called PFAC, in the environment because it's in many consumer products, Teflon and monster coating on cookware, water with paint coats, stain-resistant carpets, stain-resistant fabric in our vehicles. We're all exposed to it every day through other means other than our drinking water, and drinking water is a source. The health advisory limits that were previously mentioned have been 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS to particular chemical constituents up until this summer. And then the EPA issued new health advisory, interim health advisory levels, which are not regulatorily binding, their recommendation. They haven't gone through a regulatory rule-making process that will institute regulations on drinking water. They did set those limits very low, the technical limits, actually. So it's an issue that all drinking water providers across the nation are trying to grapple with. We're all looking at how we can eliminate and treat to make the drinking water have less PFAS than most of the PFAS group. But that's, technology's still evolving and we're still, still learning.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, partners, a second?
Second.
I thought she did. We have a motion and there's a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And you please. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.